Can we get where to start?
Oh, it feels good to me.
Cause she just said they're down.
It feels good to me.
Yeah.
Cuddle with it, baby. Have a cold. Cindy has too much fun.
She does.
Sit down, man. What's the odds? Hour and a half to hour? Meeting, I want.
For the end of the meeting?
Yeah.
Ten thirty.
I'm sorry. This is the opening of June fourth meeting. At six forty-five, we had the closed session. We discussed some personnel issues. And right now, they'll open up the draft for amendments and approval. Charlie?
Nothing.
John?
Nothing.
Richard?
Mister Mayor, I just wanted to advise you under new business communication policy update request submitted by Council on Nern, I will not participate in any discussion regarding this matter. And more importantly, I believe this council owes Representative Frank Eyler an apology. Thank you.
Jan?
Um, yeah, I have an announcement.
Anything on the agenda?
Huh?
Aren't we doing, proving the agenda?
Approving the agenda right now.
No, I don't have anything on that.
Neither do I. Now we're discussing mayor, council comments and discussions. Jan, you now can speak.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like everybody to know that on Wednesday, June twenty-seventh, at nine thirty P.M., there's gonna be on the North Carolina Channel on TV, a program titled See What Sea Change May Mean to North Carolina. And I think it might be very interesting for all of us coastal residents to watch that. And again, that's Wednesday, June the twenty-seventh, at nine thirty P.M. on the UNC Channel.
Charlie?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the town staff from high up on down for the great job they did for them on the Memorial Day service. It was too bad we were rained out in the park. It was moved to the fire station, and there were about two hundred people in attendance. Great job, staff. Sunset Vision. Sunset Vision raised the funds to install an automatic dog watering station at, it's a town park. Public Works did a great job getting that in before the pausability manifest yesterday. People I talked to that were watering their dogs there loved it. Last thing, also Public Works, I see the new flowers are in at the traffic circle. They look great, and the Christmas trees look nice and healthy and green. Thank you.
Charlie, you really like those trees.
He'd like them to be decorated all year long.
I like saying Christmas trees.
Yeah. John?
I'd like to just say thank you to Hiram for the quick in answering response. We had a citizen who complained about construction starting too early, one of the visitor, I actually think it was a visitor, construct, starting too early on the island. And Hiram immediately, you know, dealt with these, the visitor to soothe those feelings. And the council and staff, the staff dealt with the contractor who was doing the work to make sure that they knew the right hours for seven thirty is the start time during our summer season. Thank you. Second, just remind council, I will not be here on the seventeenth of July. It's for that meeting.
Do you want us to reschedule it?
No, but I'm just not gonna be here.
Okay.
That's, it's been long on the agenda that I won't be here.
No motion will be taken that night. Richard?
Uh, no, the only question I have may save.
Use the mic, please.
It may save a few minutes. I did not interview the mayor, and I'd like to find out if any of the other council members had interviews with the mayor.
Yes, I did.
They all applicant, yes.
I did.
Did anybody else?
I did too. The whole council did.
Okay. I'm the only one who did not.
Correct.
I always believe that when you're interviewing a public official, it should be in public.
Jan, would you like to say anything? I'd just like to say that I, we have an alligator policy. I'd like to see a change and make Ken be the head man. Get all the alligators off the beach.
Just so you know, we are working on something.
I know. He should, he should be the front man. No, no, no.
And at the Twin Lakes.
If I may, I'd also like to remind everybody that we are hosting our community forum for businesses next Tuesday on the twelfth. That'll be at five thirty. We're inviting all the businesses to come in and give us feedback on our operations, possibilities for change and amendments to certain things, however they'd like to see the community grow. It's open for everybody to come view, but we are trying to limit it to the businesses to give their feedback to the town, how we can improve not just our relationships with them, but just the whole economic development factor of the town. And that's gonna be here at five thirty next week.
The other thing I'd like to say is that, you know, last meeting was out of control. I apologize as the pro tem mayor. I promise you will try very hard never to have a meeting like that again. It was an embarrassment to this town. We'll work very hard not to do that again. I hope you accept my apology. Well, call to order, pledge allegiance, please.
Can we do that ten minutes early?
Lisa?
You should wait till Sunday.
I sit back down.
Exercise for the evening.
Thank you. There's nobody here for that today.
They're being accepted as written to save time. But if you would have a specific question for a department, all the department heads are here. We can go ahead and call them up.
Does anybody have a question?
Carol, just a seat up here.
Charlie, you have a question for the department heads?
No, I'm happy with the report.
John?
No, I don't have any.
Richard? Yeah? All right then, we'll just sit here.
Hey, Ken. I'll ask the police chief to step up and do the, discuss the alligator research that we've been doing last week. We have, well, we've got an email for it, so. And your packet's right here. But it's just, you know, just a brief overview of where we're at.
Right. Just to bring you up to speed, prior to, I guess, just a couple of weeks ago, we, we were in the, I don't wanna say the alligator removal or relocation business, but we were kinda hands-on with alligators in instances where we probably should not have been, where we should've just let them kinda wander away by themselves. So, a directive has been put out to our employees to tell folks if there's an alligator on someone's property, and it's in your backyard, it's in your driveway, that we're gonna follow the same procedures that North Carolina Wildlife does, is that we will respond and we will keep people away from it, but we're not gonna touch it. And the only way that we're gonna touch it is if it's a direct threat to a person. Now, as you are aware, an email that I sent to council to make you aware of what we had Friday, we had several alligators that decided to go for a swim in the ocean. They made their presence on the beach, and again, we were keeping people away, waiting for wildlife to respond. But I found out that wildlife's response was over an hour and a half away. Wholly insufficient for that type of response when we've got beachgoers, our residents are on the beach, there's dogs, there's kids, and you know the dangers that are there. And an alligator did make its way into the water. Police officers had to then, along with fire personnel, had to then ask everybody to get out of the water, cause we couldn't see where it went. At that point, a decision was made that we were gonna go get it and for the safety of everybody there and relocate it. We actually pulled it out and held on to it until wildlife was able to get there. But I had been working with North Carolina Wildlife to find out what exactly we can do. And there was a packet that was sent out to council so that a decision can be made on whether we want to do anything from train our employees to be able to capture and relocate alligators, or if we want to apply for a hunt license for reduction throughout the entire town. There's a lot that goes into that regardless of what the steps are that we decide to take. There's an option that we could just say, we're gonna be a hundred percent hands-off, and there's resources available where citizens, the town, can call private organizations that do relocations of nuisance wildlife for a fee. Every time we call, or every time a citizen calls, there's a fee. And I'll give you an idea. I called Friday and left a message, and I'm still waiting for a return call to find out if somebody can help me with a nuisance alligator. So, if that's a response we're gonna get from this private company that I called, again, I don't think that's sufficient.
Ken, last year, a gentleman said at one of the houses on the beach that I got to talk to him, well, actually, there's two of them. And they were from Wildlife Management. And they did a study on Twin Lakes about the population. And they said there wasn't enough alligators there to ask for a hunt. So maybe if we, if I can get that guy's gentleman's name, I have it at home somewhere, and I'll give that to you so you can follow up. Cause he said there was, you know, he stood out there for three days in a boat counting the alligators.
Sure.
And I guess there's gonna be so many alligators per acreage to determine it's gonna be a hunt or a removal.
Yeah, I don't know what that number is, but I know that if the town decides that we feel we have an overpopulation and we wanna reduce those numbers, we don't just automatically get a license and have people come into the town to hunt. They're gonna come out, and they're gonna do studies. They're gonna find out how many we do have, make a determination if they feel that we are overpopulated in a certain area, and then decide how many are we overpopulated in that area. So, let's say, for example, Twin Lakes has, I'm just gonna say fifty alligators, and they decide that it should only have forty. They're gonna issue ten permits, meaning that they'll only allow removal of ten.
Removal or termination?
Termination. If, if it's a hunt, they're gonna be killed.
Okay.
Right. It's not, now, we can ask them for relocation as well. And I don't know where they take them. They may take them to Oyster Bay. They may just run them right down the street. I don't know what they're gonna do with them. But again, those are things that we can find out. Though, the, the folks I talked to there are willing to do whatever it takes to even to come here and sit down with us and discuss options. But it's outlined in that packet. And again, you know, that's, that's just a starting point for, for you all to make a decision.
Ken, would you suggest an advisory? Because I don't think many citizens know what to do or have accepted this issue for many years, thinking that no one could do anything at that particular time. Would you suggest an advisory be sent out by the town with the appropriate phone numbers or the action that they should take so that everybody's on the same page?
I think it'd probably be a good idea, cause I feel that a lot of calls, just in the last month, folks that moved here from other areas that aren't familiar with alligators and are shocked and call the police and say, you need to do something about these alligators. Like, well, they, you know, they were here first, and they're gonna, you know, if you leave them alone, they're gonna leave you alone. I do have a wonderful pamphlet that the folks from Wildlife gave me that I'm sharing with those individuals, but it may not be a bad idea for us to put it on our email blast and try to get that information out. I can hear Laura typing behind me.
Would the council have any objection if the chief prepared an advisory for us to review for the citizens?
I don't have a problem with that. But I think, Lisa, could we put it on our webpage?
Yeah, we'd go on the webpage and...
We can probably devote a whole side page to it with links and resources, not just for alligators, but for all wildlife around here, what to do when a bird falls, who to call, that kinda stuff. So, we could just, it'd probably be of us to actually do a full awareness page on the website with a link.
That would be good.
For the alligators, I would just recommend using what the Wildlife Resources put together, that commission. There's a lot of numbers, a lot of questions, how to, how to cohabitate with alligators, basically.
And this is really a seasonal thing, this time of year. So, another month, they'd, they'll be relocated on their own someplace or die in the ocean.
Most likely.
Thank you, Ken. That would be helpful.
For sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Sorry to put you on the spot, chief.
He could handle it.
Think we're close enough?
Let's call to order, pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, does any member of the council have a conflict of interest, appearance, or conflict of interest with regards to any item on the agenda? And if so, please state it at this time.
No.
Charlie?
No.
Richard? Okay, Jan?
No.
This time I'd like to have a public hearing on the U.D. text amendment, Article Three, environmental regulations, part one flood. No discussion?
Move, open it.
You gotta open the public hearing.
Oh, I'd like to open a public hearing now, sorry. On the public hearing, the U.D. O. text amendment, Article Twelve, environmental regulations, part one flood, damage preventing ordinance, motion to reopen, close, open the meeting now. Any questions? So, any, any public comments?
Move, we close the meeting.
You'd like to close? Motion to close the meeting?
Mayor would like to close the public hearing meeting for part one flood damage.
Prevention ordinance.
Second?
And I would like to go, sorry.
Second.
Thank you, Charlie.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mister Mayor, we'd like to open the public hearing, is public hearing for the fiscal year nineteen proposed budget.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any comments on the budget, Richard?
No, it's for the public.
Public hearing.
It's a public hearing, I'm sorry. Any comments on the public hearing regarding the budget for two thousand nineteen? None.
Mister Mayor, I would like to close the public hearing for the fiscal year nineteen proposed budget.
My second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'll be right with everybody. Lisa, I lost a piece of paper.
Mayor's.
Yeah, I know. At this, I made a candidate form, read pa- I did lose it. Candidates will be allowed to give a brief introduction. Each councilman will be called upon to ask two questions. Mayor will ask questions submitted by the public. Each councilman will be given the opportunity to ask one follow-up question. On June nineteenth, the council will discuss the candidate, enter an appointment of authority for the position for re-advertised. If the candidate is appointed, the oath of also will be given on July second at that meeting. Would you like to come up and speak now? This is Dr. Weiss.
Swing this around a little bit so I can...
Dr. Weiss, you have-
You're, you're gonna need to bring, cause you'll be off the camera.
Is he still on camera? Now you're facing the camera, you have to smile the whole time.
Good evening, everyone. I've been asked to take about ten minutes to share with you a little bit about my personal background and to explain the reasons that I applied for the mayoral vacancy. I was born, raised, and graduated from high school in Canton, Ohio. I was a product of two families that merged and ended up with two parents, eight children, and two bathrooms. Following graduation from high school, I went on to Wittenburg University, a small liberal arts college in Springfield, Ohio. There, the faculty became probably the most important influence in my life. As I observed them teaching and working with students, doing research and writing, and participating in college and community service, I realized that's what I would like to do with my life. So, I went on to Purdue University in West Lafayette, Indiana, and earned a master's and PhD there in medical sociology with secondary emphases in research methods and statistics. Medical sociology was a relatively new field then, and when I got my PhD, there were lots of job offers. I received five and accepted the one that was the lowest paying because it was the one that offered what I really wanted to do with my life. At that point, I went to Roanoke College, a sister school of Wittenburg, located in Salem, Virginia, just outside Roanoke. And to make a long story short, I liked it and spent the next thirty-seven years there until my retirement. I was fortunate to have a number of other experiences during my years at Roanoke. I was a visiting researcher at the World Health Organization in Geneva, Switzerland. Later, I was a visiting researcher at the Kennedy Institute for Bioethics at Georgetown University in Washington, D.C. I was able to live five times for about a month each time on the Navajo Tribal Reservation in northeastern Arizona. And probably most importantly, during those years, I met my wife Janet. And after the world's longest courtship, we have been married for twenty-nine years. During this time, I acquired, I think, several skills that should be helpful in, in the position of mayor. I wanted to share four of these with you. First of all, I have had several leadership opportunities at the state, regional, and national level. I was president of the Virginia Sociological Association, and later president of the Virginia Social Science Association. I founded and for eight years directed a community research center, and I established the Office of Institutional Assessment at Roanoke College. Secondly, I have acquired a number of technical skills over time, and these would include things like research and writing. I am the author, co-author of five books and about three dozen journal articles. I've successfully applied for more than a dozen grants. I have experience at the community level in working with long-term planning and program development, and also in website development. Third, in each of the communities I've lived, I have participated in service activities. In the Roanoke Valley, I, for almost all of the years that I worked there, I volunteered at a free health clinic in which healthcare professionals volunteered their time to offer services to the working poor. In addition, I volunteered in a number of animal-related activities, including a no-kill animal shelter, and doing pet therapy with our dog in a nursing home, an assisted living center, in a hospital, and also in a Veterans Administration hospital. And also, under the auspices of the Community Research Center, I performed a number of free research projects for nonprofit-making organizations within the community. Fourth, I have had a lot of experience in dealing with ethical issues. I taught a course in medical ethics for more than thirty years, and I've attended numerous conferences on ethical decision-making. I've published articles on ethical issues during research and ethical issues in medicine, and for a time, I served on a local ethics board of- and for a time, I served on a local ethics board of a psychiatric geriatric hospital. In these activities, I think I've learned two things more than anything else about myself, and they're things that I could offer to you as promises if I am selected as mayor. And the first of these is that I would work extremely hard. I throw myself into any responsibility that I accept and would look forward to that. And secondly, it's always been extremely important to me to be as fair as I can be with all the people with whom I am working. Finally, I would like to say something about what I anticipate to be my areas of focus should I be selected as mayor, and I'll mention about five things here as well. First, and most obvious, would be digging into each of the important issues that our council is facing and will be facing in the near future. I would look forward to learning as much as I can about them. That's a process that I have already begun. Secondly, and in some ways perhaps most importantly, I would like to try to help shift the local culture, as especially it is manifest at town council meetings, towards one of greater collegiality, greater respectfulness for each other, and more transparency. We all know that we live in a beautiful community. Great merchants, great opportunities for recreation, diverse neighborhoods, and truly one of the world's most beautiful beaches. But we all also know that since the inception of Sunset Beach, or almost since that time, there has been considerable contentiousness in the political process and in local governance. And I think it's reached a point where we might all agree that it's really doing harm to our community. It hurts for me to read that some people who have anticipated retiring here are having second thoughts, or that some people who live here are not sure they want to stay, or at least they're shying away from civic involvement. When disagreement reaches the point of lack of civility, and by that I mean things like name-calling, accusations, inflammatory language, even threats sometimes, then I think it's interfering with our ability, and by our, I mean all of us, our ability to do our best for the community. And I think we're at the time when maybe we would all agree that this is something we need to focus on. Third, I would like to increase communication with the community and with other communities, agencies, and groups with which we have mutual interests. In increasing communication within our own community, I have in mind things like going back to ways that some previous mayors have used to inform the community on a timely basis about things happening in the community. And I'd also like to create opportunities, additional opportunities, for the community to be able to get together and discuss ideas with each other and then to share their thoughts with the town council. If selected as mayor, I can promise that I will attend as many community events as possible, but for certain, I will be at any event that offers corn dogs and fried Oreos. Fourth, I would like to see us move towards additional creative, cost-effective methods for enhancing our community while retaining the special qualities for which our community is known. And fifth, I would like to spend time further promoting Sunset Beach for being the wonderful and fascinating place that it is to live and to visit. And I'd be glad to talk more about any of those things. Thank you, and I would be glad to answer questions.
This time, does council ask questions first, or is it all the— This time, Charlie?
Dr. Weiss, I was impressed by your resume, and I was impressed by the way you handled yourself when Councilman Corbett and I interviewed you. You paid attention, and that shows a lot of respect, and that's what we need here. I was very impressed by your ability to apply for grants and have those grants awarded, and I hope you can do the same with grants that will benefit our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie.
Dr. Weiss, thanks very much for stepping forward and volunteering. It was a hard-fought political campaign, but you're emerging at the top. You have some challenges ahead of you. I was very impressed also with your resume, and I liked your presentation this evening. Thank you very much. We're going to challenge you to live up to all of that. One of the objectives that you had talked about strengthening how Sunset Beach Council and staff function, how to strengthen how we, as a council and staff, town staff function in a professional, collegial, and transparent manner. It's been a challenge, as you pointed out, for many years in this community. So how would you propose doing that?
Yeah, very good question, John, and I would begin by saying that it's not something that I think one person alone could do, but rather something one where several people could initiate and hopefully have lots of people or all of us working together. I do think there are some things that can be done in town council meetings that would promote perhaps greater respectfulness or collegiality. As the mayor, certainly I would want all of the members to know that I am following all the rules and that I am being fair to all of the members. I'd like to see us take a more deliberate process when possible in making decisions. And I think by doing so, it will facilitate better discussion. And by a better process, I mean being clear about what we already know about issues, being clear what we don't know about issues but need to learn, involving the community early on and getting their opinions or thoughts or feelings about whatever issue it is, identifying the important arguments on each side of the question. And then finally, as we make a decision, always look for win-win solutions, or if that's not possible, compromises. And I realize neither of those are possible in many instances, but we shouldn't fail to do that because we haven't looked for opportunities. If it's a situation where one side prevails and the other doesn't, I think we still have one more important thing to do as long as there are good, sound arguments on both sides, and that is to see what we can do for those who are on the side that has not prevailed. I mean, if we have a three-to-two vote, or a four-to-one vote, or even a five-zero vote, that doesn't mean that those who have not prevailed don't have legitimate interests that we ought to be considered with. And therefore, I would say it would be appropriate for the council, but also especially those who are on the side that didn't prevail, to look for what we could do to address their concerns. It may not be as good as prevailing on the issue, but we shouldn't just ignore reasonable arguments and reasonable positions. I think if we did that, there would be a feeling that we're, perhaps a feeling more that we're all working together, and it's not just winning and losing, but trying to be responsive to the community. Third, I think it's the mayor's responsibility, not members of town council, that when we get off track, that we stop for a second, we catch our breath, and then we try to proceed more like what we want to proceed. So if I need to bang the gavel, I will bang the gavel. It won't be done in a matter of trying to silence people. Much of what I've described to you, I think, is an effort to get more from the community, not less, but to get it in a way that is easier for council to consider and to include in the decision-making process. So this is a buy-in. I hope in working with council and in working with the community, that all of us can see the benefits of trying to work better together, and that's part of what I would try to bring to the position.
Thank you. We wish you every success in that area.
Thank you.
I'll be one of your challenges.
Richard?
Dr. Weiss, there's no doubt that you're extremely qualified, and I wish to thank you for stepping forward. I have two questions, but I guess we're asking one question at a time?
Yeah.
Oh, I can ask two?
Yeah.
I had five because I did not interview you for, and you know the reasons why I did not, so I thank you for respecting that. My first question, during the past two years, the Beacon has reported a number of controversial topics that have escaped both the knowledge and the approval of the council. For example, the missing weapons issue, the farmer's market management changeover, and the workplace violence matter. As mayor, how would you have attempted to manage these matters differently?
Well, my first response to that would always be a preventive response. And I think if all the members of council and the town staff and the community work together and find and develop protocols of exactly how we would like issues to be handled, that would be a first start. And I cannot say if that exists fully now or partially. I'm simply not familiar with the protocols that exist regarding that. But certainly, prevention of getting into a difficult spot like that would be the first thing. Secondly, once a tough issue like that occurs, I think in as non-confrontational a manner as possible, council needs to talk about it. I'm a big fan of discussion set apart from decision-making. I think a lot of times, if we know that a vote is forthcoming, all of the attention goes to the vote, and not as much attention as we would like goes to the actual issue. So if possible, in a setting of that type, for us simply to talk about how we got off the path that we wanted, what we can do to make sure that we don't get off that same path again. That's an adequate answer, but in general, those would be the kinds of things I have in mind.
Thank you. Just one more question. As a body, regardless of the public records, we have had a habit of offering our opinions seemingly to fit our political narrative. As a result, we've had some contentious moments. What will you do to help change this culture?
Rich, I hope if we adopt some decision-making process like I've described, where all of us are focused at a very early step, maybe the first step, in cataloging what we already know about an issue. And a lot of times, there are a lot of things that we do know, but oftentimes, if it's become a difficult issue, there are lots of things we don't know. And I think we need to identify them and pursue them and get answers to them before proceeding. There is certainly a necessary part where people's reaction to the facts come in, their opinions come in, their judgments come in, but it ought to be clear to us that we have a good and appropriate set of facts that we are working from. And if you don't make sure that those are individually compartmentalized, each of those steps are individually compartmentalized, I think in any kind of setting, it's easy for them to get intertwined together. And so somebody is offering facts, somebody is offering opinion, and probably both are frustrated at the other one. So I think there's a time for facts, a time for learning more facts, and then a time for discussing those, and hopefully that would be a step in the right direction.
Thank you very much, Dr. Weiss.
Yeah?
First of all, thank you so much for stepping up to what you might find is surprisingly a hard-working job. I do not have any questions that weren't already answered by the previous questions. I really appreciate the thought you've put in into helping solve some of the issues that this council has been having recently. So I don't have any questions. Were you alike your answers to all of those questions, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Weiss. I'd like to thank you more than anybody for stepping up to the plate. In most of the questions that people in the town asked or answered already, there's one or two there. One is, what is the three most important areas where the town needs to focus in effort to improve themselves next year?
Well, I would say that we're in the unusual situation right now of having three very important positions for which we are hiring, and certainly that has got to be one of the, if not the major, priority. Secondly, I think it's known to many people that we have probably delayed taking action on storm, the problems associated with stormwater runoff for too long. As I read the consultant's report about the issues in the community, it was illuminating to find a number of problems that exist in our infrastructure, for example, and that has got to be certainly near the top, at the top, near the top of the issues that we are working on. I think right now, a third issue, and again, one where we have consultants and council has been deliberating on, would be the issue of shoreline management, including the dredging that has been, was passed at the last meeting of Mary's Creek and Turtle's Creek, of the feeder canal, all of the finger canals and the bay. But not all the waterways have been decided yet, and that's an issue that I know is coming to head at this point, and that would be an extremely important issue as well.
Well, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mark.
Well, in talking about dredging, another question that wasn't asked, what's your position on dredging Jinx Creek?
Gee, thank you, whoever asked that question. Janet, if I find out, that was you. Well, I'm going to start out by qualifying my answer. I want to be fair to you all, I want to be fair to council, and I want to be fair to myself in answering that question. Council is in the middle of this or towards the end of this, and they have been involved in a number of steps that I have not been involved in. I've seen Bob Neal at so many meetings, I feel like I know him, but I don't know him. And I did not attend the scoping meeting, I mean, I was not invited, of course, to that, so that's a step where information was presented, and I was not part of it. So I want to acknowledge that there are— So I want to acknowledge that there are others who have been more involved in this project, and I want to suggest it may not be overly helpful for me to be taking a stand right at this point. However, I do believe in transparency, and I do believe that I ought to make my feelings known in a straightforward manner when people ask me a straightforward question. So with the qualifications I have mentioned, this is where I am right now. I thought the council made an excellent decision last time in all of the waterways that they said, "Let's go ahead and dredge." I live within sight of the feeder canal, and from the time that we moved here, almost at low tide, I could see the water level getting lower and lower and lower. And so, we asked questions about dredging, and I think it's probably fair to say we need to dredge those bodies of water more often, assuming, of course, that the relevant property owners agree. But I think that was a very good step. I don't believe we should dredge North Jinx Creek. I think those who want to dredge North Jinx Creek have sound arguments in their favor. If I had a boat and I was located on one of the waterways, I would think it was entirely reasonable to want to have as much access as possible to the ICW. What trumps that, in my opinion, would be the report of the Environmental Resources Committee, at least some members of the scoping committee, and especially communication that has occurred with seven prominent coastal scientists, all of whom have identified dangers in dredging North Jinx Creek and have recommended against doing so. These have not received much attention, and I don't have the time to go into them in detail, but I'll mention them real quickly. They have discussed the destruction of the oyster habitat. Now, of course, there's the possibility of mitigation, but we don't know if mitigation will work or not. And they won't issue a permit, my understanding is, until we find that out, and that can be a several-year process. If it hasn't worked, if we haven't replaced the oysters that would be destroyed in North Jinx Creek, then we do the whole process again. This is a very costly process, it's a long process, and that's an issue. Secondly, these coastal scientists have told us that if we do dredge North Jinx Creek, we will negatively affect the primary nursing areas, all surrounding North Jinx Creek, that they are interrelated and they could be damaged by that process. Third, there are apparently some fish species that would be harmed or could be harmed by this process. Fourth, it's likely that erosion would be more likely to occur in bodies adjoining North Jinx Creek or even onto the ICW. And fifth, and certainly near the head of the list, would be the possibility that we are making flooding of the east end of our island more likely. These are serious matters. Now, I've read them, and I've judged that they are so serious that that's what we should follow. Others may read them differently, but that's where I've come down on them. Having come down on them, but feeling those who want to dredge North Jinx Creek have reasonable arguments for wanting easier access to the ICW, then I would say, let's look at every other possibility. Some may have drawn conclusions about dredging South Jinx Creek, but I think there's still more to learn there. I'd like to learn more about the effects of dredging Tubbs Inlet. At the last meeting, Bob alerted me to something that I wondered about, but I didn't know about, and that was the eastern channel that flows behind OIB, and whether doing some dredging there could lend itself to giving greater access. I don't know if any of those things will work. Maybe none of them are likely to work, but I think it's, again, one of those kinds of things we ought to look at and be sure before we move past it. Let's say none of those things work. Then I think we need to sit down with those who are in favor of dredging North Jinx Creek and saying, "You didn't prevail on this issue," but be creative. What could we all do for you to make your position better? Is there something we can do with the city's put-in location? Is there some other way or some way we can contribute to storing boats in a more convenient manner? I'm not a boating person, except for a kayak, so I'm not the person to come up with great ideas on this, but I think the boaters might, could, come up, and that we ought to give them the opportunity and support them if they come up with something that is reasonable.
Dr. Weiss, thank you very much. I'll see you on the 19th.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Follow-up question, anybody?
I don't have it anymore.
No? Richard?
Janet?
Dr. Weiss, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'd like Assistant Chief of Fire Department to speak about six firemen.
I was really hoping the police chief was going to do a live demo in here of a gator, but I guess that's not happening. I'm going to start off the presentation with a video that was put out by the International Association of Firefighters. It discusses NFPA 1710, which is a standard for us. But it was created, it's exactly what the topic is tonight, so if you don't mind, let's start that.
Can't even blame Cindy.
She's socializing instead of working.
... for our community. Your house is on fire. It's your worst nightmare. In just three minutes, a fire can grow 16 times larger than when it started, and it continues to grow bigger and faster every second. Once the clock starts ticking, there's a shrinking window of opportunity to save lives and property. You want a full crew of firefighters to put it out quickly, or you may suffer a catastrophic loss. But how many are enough? Fifty? Twenty? Forty? How do you decide? Fortunately, there's an internationally-recognized industry standard. It's called NFPA 1710, and it's based on scientific evidence and research that establishes how many firefighters are needed to put out each fire and rescue anyone trapped. At a fire scene, you want a firefighter doing every job that needs to be done to save you and your house. And at a fire, there's a lot that needs to be done, like stretching the hose, hooking to a hydrant, searching for trapped people, venting the hot gases, and much more. For a low-hazard, single-family house fire, NFPA 1710 specifies a minimum of 15 firefighters dispatched in the initial alarm. At an open-air strip shopping center or garden apartment fire, the standard specifies a minimum of 28 firefighters dispatched in the first alarm. And for fires in high-rise buildings at least seven stories tall, the data show that the initial dispatch should be for a minimum of 43 firefighters, and that fire department should send additional firefighters to situations that are beyond the capability of the initial alarm. When considering crew size on each engine and truck responding to a fire, the standard says that, in low-hazard response areas like residential neighborhoods, the required number of firefighters on each fire engine and truck is four. In areas with a high number of incidents or geographic restrictions like narrow roads, single-axis bridges, or islands, a minimum of five firefighters on each fire engine and ladder truck is required. And in dense urban areas with high-hazard occupancies like high-rise buildings, the minimum number of firefighters on each fire engine or truck is six. Regardless of the type of property, 1710 also sets the time of arrival on scene within four minutes for the first engine with four firefighters. The 1710 standard for both response time and crew size is based on scientific evidence, not opinion. The National Institute of Standards and Technology, known as NIST, and its partners, conducted extensive research to document the optimal crew sizes for various types As a decision-maker, you and firefighters share a common goal: everyone gets out alive. So when a house is on fire, just remember, it takes a minimum of 15 firefighters to put it out. And the responding crews should have the right number of firefighters on each engine and truck. The quicker the response time, the better the outcome for everyone. For more information, talk to your local firefighters. Thanks for listening, and stay safe.
... firefighters, 17 firefighters, and I think that sounds a little confusing for some of us. There's only five people, so I'm changing the terminology to that. When it comes to duty personnel, 24-hour firefighters, there's five. So back in December, you voted for us to hire additional three, which gave us five. So there's the background, back in October of 17, council voted three to two to hire the additional firefighters. As you all are aware, Chief Dempsey presented a proposal to hire six additional firefighters to bring the minimum staffing level to three and two. If you don't mind, click it for me. Sorry. But today, current staffing is three and two. That's what we're discussing tonight, three and two. Three at Station One, two at Station Two. Current minimum staffing is two and two. So what that means is, if someone's out and we cannot fill that position with a part-time position, we work two and two. Okay? Prior to December 1st of 2017, we were three, our minimum staffing level was three at Station One and zero at Station Two. So in 2017, we closed Station Two quite a bit, just due to staffing. A little bit about our history here. We opened Station Two in 2012. Prior to that, in 2010, we hired the fourth firefighter. And then, a little bit of a timeline there, back in 2000, we had one 24-hour person. 2003, we gained an extra. 2008, there we went to three. Okay. Here's a timeline showing our call volume. As you can see, it's showing an increasing call volume almost every year. Back in 2016, we had an increase. That was when the Hurricane Matthew came through, and that caused quite a few extra incidents there. Okay, I always like to bring this up in any presentation I have, overlapping incidents. That's when we have at least two calls at the same time. As you can see, the top line, 2018, we've already had 110 incidents at the same time. So that's where both stations are running two separate calls or possibly three or four calls at the same time. Okay, our population, this is a density study Brunswick County did, 16.55 square miles that we have in Sunset Beach. We are considered suburban, according to the Census Bureau. We are the third highest fire district in Brunswick County, according to the density study. Okay, and there we are, 962. We're number three, just behind Oak Island, Tri Beach. And the amount of construction going on in Sunset Beach and within our fire district, numbers from Brunswick County have not came in at this time, so I'd imagine with the building going on in Ocean Ridge, Sunset Ridge, even in Sunset Beach, we're around 1,000 by this point. Okay, just a few quick shots I wanted to show everyone. This is the west end of Sunset Beach. Just want to show the closeness of the houses and how many structures with a bird's-eye view there. Couple of shots of some island houses, just to show how close they are together and the size. Another shot there on West End. And this is East Sunset Beach here. Okay, a couple of shots of the beach houses there, just showing how close they are together. As you can see, this is pretty close there. Dealing with a lot of vegetation on some houses over there in between the two structures. As everyone's aware, the size of some of the homes over there, large homes. This is a good one, the engine crew took. Just happened to cruise by this house. If you notice, there's seven cars parked under this one house. It's a lot of people staying inside these homes during the summer months. We're moving out to Sandpiper Bay here. As you can see, a lot of homes in the Sandpiper Bay community. Moving over to Rice Mill Circle and Sea Trail, a lot of homes and a lot of the smaller condos up on the north end of Rice Mill. This is Sunset Ridge, a lot of construction. It's almost completely built out. Okay, this is the north end of Sea Trail, some of the Charleston-style homes. Avion Court, we're going to look at some of the condo homes we have here. Avion Court, this is the Champions. There's a shot exterior. There's Regency. Seaside Landing, that's off of Seaside Road. There's the condos at Sandpiper Bay. 70 condos there, there's a shot from the ground. This Waterway Landing, Park Road. This is Osprey Ridge over in Sea Trail. There's another shot of the other side. River Creek over in Sea Trail. And that completes the presentation on that. But I would like to ask that we keep those firefighters with us. We need to remain where we're at, three and two.
Richard, thank you very much. Great presentation. At this time, I'd like to open up the public comments on agenda items only, please. Ms. Scott?
Sorry to have to come up here for this, and I really apologize. I did not prepare written remarks.
Microphone.
Sorry, I keep forgetting how short I am. I did not prepare a statement, so please bear with me. I'll try and get my thoughts out in proper order. I'm talking about the, not a problem with increasing the fire fees. I'm concerned that you are not, at the same time... I'm concerned that you are not, at the same time, reducing the tax structure in Sunset Beach. The fire fee increase will bring in an additional $550,000. My understanding, and which is what the general fund of Sunset Beach has been contributing to the fire department, in addition to the fire fees that they have received. My basic problem with what you're doing now is, every one of you has been elected on the basis of budgetary strictness, transparency in particular. I don't think the public, the population in Sunset Beach is aware at all that a 45% increase is occurring, and that that really means that they are paying the equivalent of three and a half cents additional taxes. Now, I know they're not, and in fact, I understand that, Mark. I was thinking about the numbers. Everybody in the fire district will pay that, that includes many people that are not in Sunset Beach itself. However, what you're planning to use that money for, by not reducing the tax rate to reflect the $550,000 that we're saving from the general fund, what the argument that I have heard is that you want that money to pay for equipment, for stormwater management. I appreciate that, we all want to see stormwater management start. But the way to do it is not to use fire fees to justify $550,000 going towards equipment. If you have an issue with stormwater, if you don't have enough money in the budget to cover your needs for stormwater management, without, you know, and not, as a result, you're not decreasing our tax rate, something's wrong with that picture. The discussion on additional funds that you need should occur through the budget process, not through fire fees. We have a fund balance to pay for things like equipment. You could also, if you had wanted to, you could have financed that out. But to use an increase in fire fees without a subsequent reduction in our property tax rate is not really fair to the citizens. And as I said, mostly, this is a transparency issue. If you need funds, make that known, figure out how you're going to pay for it, but don't use one fund to pay for the other. And by the way, if you need an extra $500,000, postpone the sidewalk project for another year. That will give you, you've already have money in the budget for that, that'll give you money to pay for the equipment that you need to start the more important project immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
I don't normally comment on public comments. But Carol's inaccurate. We are not using that money for stormwater management, we have the money for that. What we're doing with that money, we have a budget deficit of about $538,000 from what we bring in, and what the fire is $1.7 million, we bring in about $1.2 million. That's going to offset that cost, so we don't have to borrow that money. Carol, no, no.
You have to let me.
No, no, I do not. I do not, Carol. Just please, it's not for equipment. So that's all I'm saying, it's not for equipment, it's to pay a deficit in our fire department. And right now, we do not know what we're going to get. We don't know if we're going to get 45%, we don't know if we're going to get 25%. They haven't voted on it yet, so how can we possibly give a decrease in taxes right now until we know?
You're going to really make me wait until the end of the meeting to answer that?
Any more comments, please?
Karen Joseph, 915 San Piper Bay Drive. First of all, I want to thank Richard for sharing that information with everyone, I think it's very important. As a resident of San Piper Bay, we have already had one house burned to the ground, and I hope that, excuse me, that there would never be a discussion of closing Fire Station Two. Regarding this issue of the fire fees and what we pay and who pays what, it is a very complicated issue. And I would have liked to have seen a presentation that just explained, here's what we believe the county is going to do, and how it is going to affect us. Here's what is being proposed for a new fire fee structure, and what that money, how much money will it bring to town, and what it will be used for. Now, each of you may be able to answer all those questions, but I don't recall ever hearing that kind of an explanation. And I think that would go a long way for the residents in the fire district, and most people don't even understand that. The fire district is far more than Sunset Beach. So, I don't know if it is imperative that you address this issue this evening, for whatever reasons, but if it is not imperative, I would strongly encourage you to find a way to share more information with the residents. Thank you.
It is on the agenda, Carol.
Yeah, I know it's on the agenda, I just meant I don't know if you want to address it.
We'll try to. Anybody else? Carol, you want to come up?
My point is, don't confuse the fire department needs with our general fund and tax structure for the town. The fire department should stand separately. By increasing fire fees, you've covered their budget, unless you agree to hire additional firemen, in which case, they would probably need more money. The $550,000 that you're getting in fire fees theoretically should be a reduction in the tax rate, because you shouldn't need that in the general fund. The last time I listened to a budget meeting, we not only had enough money to cover our needs, but you agreed to a 1% reduction in the tax rate. This is another $550,000. You've got to justify why you're not reducing the tax rate further.
Because we don't know if we're going to get it or not.
From my understanding, it's a done deal. From my understanding, it's a done deal. You may not get the money until it's not built until September, and you won't get the money until December, but that's true with every dollar you get in fire fees. And we manage to exist with that.
Go ahead. Oh, no, I was just going to, okay. Thank you, Carol. Any more public comments? Town administrator department reports is accepted as written, so we'll go right to new business?
All business.
All business, rather, I'm sorry. Here, we're going to do the recusal discussion, and that's Councilman Serrato.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a letter in your packet that explains the reason why I am requesting this recusal with Mr. Corbett. I will not repeat it. I read it in the record, I believe, last week or a couple of weeks ago. I'm not going to reread it, it's in the packet. I have a strong, I have to be very careful how I say this, the ethics that, the corporate ethics that I were taught, and the corporate ethics that I was responsible to interpret, and to follow, and to administer, causes me personal harm regarding this matter. I don't mean personal harm, but it raises ethical concerns to me. Now, those ethical concerns may conflict with law in the wonderful state of North Carolina. And my motion, I'm requesting the council to make this decision, it should not be abdicated to anyone. And I recognize that my standards may be a little extreme to some, but I want you to respect them. And I expect an up and down vote. There is no doubt that a council member would financially benefit if Jinks Creek were to be dredged. It has been verified by the Brunswick County Revenue Department. And I'm sure you can find any lawyer on both sides to interpret the law any way they seem fit. That's why there are courts. But to me, this is a council decision, and I would like an up and down vote, so that we can move on.
Okay, we're going to have more discussion.
I would like to file a motion requesting that Councilman-
Richard, we're going to have more discussion.
I have to file the motion. I would like to file a motion requesting that Councilman Corbett be recused from any further participation in our vote related to North Jinks Creek, the Bay Area, and also any matters related to the dredging district where he resides.
Do I have a second? Any more discussion?
Yeah, it does.
It does, there. No second. At this time, I would like to make a proposal, that motion 17 to prevent re- instruction-
You want to give John a chance?
Oh, John, I am going to.
Go.
All right. But first, let me give John the tour.
Do your thing.
I'd like to make a motion, so we cannot re-induce, re-induce, I'm trying to say-
Introduce.
Re-introduce this motion for three months. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
John, please.
I'll go before John. This has been going on for so long. Our town attorney has three times told us that there's no conflict of interest, that there's no need for Mr. Corbett to recuse himself.
Is that all?
Mr. Serrato mentioned the data that he received from the county assessment department, quoting Mr. Serrato, assessment specialist for Sunset Beach, Chris Boni, who states that the sales value for uninterrupted deep water access increases by 20%. Now, that's the sales value, while not having any effect on the assessed value. Mr. Serrato presented no facts to verify this information. The fact that Mr. Serrato made a point, and has continued making a point, that Mr. Corbett was wrong in notifying other property owners of the information and facts, because it was not approved by council.
Charlie, I think that's gone off topic a little bit. We're talking about recusal.
Well, okay, and this is part of, and this is part of my answer to all of the-
We'll stay on the recusal end of it, not the other end, all right?
Okay. Anyway, the, you know, I'm going to be nice, I'm done, thank you.
Yeah, we're going to save it.
No.
John?
John?
This is not something I'm happy in doing, but I'm going to go ahead and respond. Not only was Councilman Serrato's May 15 letter out of order and in contravention of council procedures, when he forced it in at the draft agenda review last meeting, not when the issue was to be discussed later under Old Business, but it's also, again, raising old issues and wasting time and money for both the town staff and our town attorney, who has previously addressed this issue at least twice in public sessions. He concluded, I have, I do not have a conflict of interest in June 2016, when he actually was referring to a different council member, and May 2017, and tonight, he wasn't here, but he did it in our closed session, and he said I could say this publicly in June 2016. Okay, three times, he's gone through the process of evaluating my financial situation and the conflict of interest here. This demand for my recusal is another of a continuing series of assaults on my sense of conscience, my sense of duty, my views of what is good for Sunset Beach, and more pointedly, it is a direct slam on my integrity. To me, Mr. Serrato's letter appears to be an attempt at character assassination. Not only has our town attorney advised that there is not a basis for this conflict of interest three times, now for the second time, I am publicly refuting Mr. Serrato's inaccurate allegations. The first time was May 1st, 2017, at the town council meeting. If you look at the YouTube for that meeting, minutes 35 through 42, you'll see the gruesome details. Took seven minutes to do it last time, it may take more this time. I advise council members, citizens, and media to carefully review facts before accepting any of Mr. Serrato's allegations, whether voiced at council meetings, in his emails, in his highly imaginative self-funded taxpayers' digest, or in his missives to the press. Here are point-by-point rebuttals to his May 15 letter, the reason I am speaking, and the subject was recusal requests, so I can address all of those issues. He started off stating Corbett orchestrated an email campaign promoting the farmers' market. My first bit of advice to Mr. Serrato is get the basics correct. It has never been a farmers' market, it's an artisan market. Second, and more important, many of us know who started the email campaign. I have the email on it, and I, as I have publicly said before, it was not me. But in all candor, I strongly supported the email effort to inform citizens of what is going on, and urging them to voice their opinions. The citizens did. I will continue to do so when I think it is an important voice in the community is not aware of what is being heard, or is not being heard. More recently, I did that in the matter of dredging. Mr. Serrato and his point number one of his May 15 letter is correct. One of the few times that I voted, in that I voted against asking the county tax assessment specialist to attend their meeting. In my view, it would have been a waste of his time and council time. It is highly unlikely that the property values would rise up to 20% with no impact on assessments. If that is what the county tax assessor actually said, we only have Mr. Serrato's words. Anyone who has owned property knows that sales values go up, tax assessments will follow at the next reevaluation. Then I and other waterfront property owners would continue to pay higher taxes on land that we already paid a premium on, a higher premium because the property had boat-worthy water. Concerning Mr. Serrato's point number two, in my mind, the environmental consequences of dredging North Jinks Creek are still open to debate. So far, the findings are highly opinionated, and any bias I may express is simply because no independent coastal scientist with a contrary opinion was included in the ERC findings, with a contrary, because there was no coastal scientist with a contrary opinion, at least that I could discern. And finally, on this point, I carefully considered the ERC discussions and reports, and I drafted and submitted a memo dated April 29th to the council and to our Moffett Nichols consultant for the scoping agencies to consider. The memo identified 11 issues for the scoping committee agencies to consider, and five future steps that needed to be addressed before this council could make any decisions. These were extracted from the ERC-generated information. I did read, I did listen, I did absorb. Underlying the discussions is my view that we need to get facts before reaching conclusions. This appears to be a concept often formed of Mr. Serrato. Concerning Mr. Serrato's point number three, as Councilman Nern has pointed out, oh, sorry, he didn't point it out this time, Councilman Larkin made the motion to dissolve the ERC at the April 3, 2017. at the April 3, 2017 meeting. I did not make the motion, simple fact. The motion did not pass. However, the council did pass new rules for the ERC on the April 18th, 2017 meeting. And after that, the ERC members then submitted their letter of mass resignation dated April 19th, and the town council voted to accept it. The ERC remains on the books as a town council committee, but with no active members. Mr. Serrato's point four is correct, insofar as I did initiate an email campaign on dredging. And yes, some could interpret it as promoting dredging. I would welcome, however, Mr. Serrato to tell me what in my email was misinformation, and what information that I put out needed to be approved by the council. I think any taxpayer confusion comes from the misleading bomb blast that Mr. Serrato puts out. I ask council waterf-, in that email, I ask council waterfront owners for their views supporting or opposing dredging. I asked property owners how to sell the concept of dredging. I reported what the scoping committee would and would not be doing, and I advised on how I think the council would ultimately decide dredging would have to be paid for by the waterfront property owners. I would be happy to read the email to anyone, to everyone here, but I would prefer that if anybody wants to see that email, if you haven't already received it, send me an email, and I'll send it to you. I will also leave a copy with our Brunswick Beacon reporter. Mr. Serrato stated in his point five that I am reluctant to accept federal and state scoping meeting agencies' recent denial to dredge North Jinx Creek. However, if the agencies had actually issued a denial, there would be no reason for this to be on our agenda today. The fact is that the permit requests have not been submitted, so there is nothing yet for the agencies to deny, so I don't have to accept or deny anything there. Addressing his closing accusations, Mr. Serrato tries again to use UNC School of Government to imply that I have a conflict of interest. He admits that he thinks that the January 25th, 2012 blog that he provided as the basis for his conclusions that I have a conflict of interest back last year, and in the meeting packet today. In fact, the blog was posted by Professor Freida Bluestein, and it provides the clear criteria I used as to why I have no conflict of interest. I used the same blog back in May 2012 in my rebuttal of Mr. Serrato's allegations. Furthermore, the UNC School of Government held an ethics webinar for local elected officials on May 23rd, 2018, last week. Professor Bluestein and Professor Norma Houston were the presenters. A conflict of interest question was raised on a hypothetical situation similar to our dredging issue. Yes, I had the question planted. One of the professors explains that there is a continuum with regard to financial interest, the key factor being, is the voter a single beneficiary or a larger group of people? If it's a single person getting all the money versus is the profit, the financial benefit, should there be any, spread amongst all kinds in the larger group of people? Our town advisor, our town attorney has advised that as owner of one of over 300 or so properties in this issue, I am not unique. I am not in an exceptional position to gain financially. I would also add, any financial gain is not direct or immediate, and it would not happen until such time in the future that I sold the property, assuming that it did go up in value. Our family retirement home is here, and it was built on the island, and we have no plans to sell. Now, these cover the three key criteria for conflict of interest in the blog. Professor Bluestein subsequently sent the questionnaire, a follow-up email suggesting that we should listen to the advice of our town attorney. Our town attorney gives us the counsel. Our town attorney says I do not have a conflict of interest. I say I do not have a conflict of interest. By North Carolina law, I am required to vote on these issues. So in conclusion, as I said in May 2017, when I went through this same drill, before accepting, believing, or repeating anything Councilman Serrato says, I advise people to verify the information first before trusting it. I apologize again, as I did in May 2017, for taking up council's time and citizens' time, but I will not accept Mr. Serrato's unfounded allegations and implications without a rebuttal. If he cannot understand that I do not have a conflict of interest, I will continue to try to help him understand. Thank you. I appreciate your time and your patience.
John, thank you very much.
May I please say something? I would like to say that I attended that webinar in Wilmington last Wednesday, and I agree that there is no conflict of interest on anybody's part sitting on this council, on anybody's part. I learned that in that webinar. I would really appreciate it as a person sitting up here, and I know people in the audience would probably appreciate it, if you, John, and you, Rich, would settle your personal differences outside of these chambers. Thank you.
I'm not the one that brought them to the chambers.
I know. Guys, are we gonna have a motion? Rich?
You already went through that.
You had the motion on the floor?
Yeah, we voted.
You're good, next item.
Next item. Consideration of removal of Jinx Creek from the project. The only thing I'm gonna say about this right now, real quick, it's not on the project. It's not on the project now, and it's not gonna be on the project later. We discussed this in detail with Mr. Moffett and Robert, is we are not putting, it's not on the permit, it's, we didn't discuss to put it on the permit. If we do put it on the permit, we're told, we told you people last, three weeks ago, it'd be three to five years before we could dredge anything if we put Jinx Creek on that permit. So I think us talking about consideration of removal of Jinx Creek, it already is. So I think this is a moot point, Richard, but if you want to put a motion on the floor-
Mr. Mayor, it hasn't been voted on.
All right, put a motion.
I would like to file a motion to permanently remove North Jinx Creek from the shoreline management program. North Jinx Creek is defined as the area immediately north of the Feta Canal and the northern tidal creek path to the Atlantic intercoastal waterway. Would you like to hear the reasons that I would like to have it removed?
No. We've talked about this for a long time, Richard. Do you have a second? There's no second, so it dies. At this time, I'd like to put a motion seventeen to prevent this to come back on the agenda for three more months.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Reconsideration of modifying the town's fire fee resolution. Mr. Richard?
Mr. Mayor, first of all, to me, the fire fee resolution is misleading. And please allow me to explain why. There is no question that the 45% fire fee rate increase will generate sufficient revenues to pay for the town's fire department operating budget. This is illustrated in the financial analysis, which is in your packet that I prepared. It's all public record. This will also reduce the necessary Sunset Beach taxpayer funds to supplement the department's operating expense. And I believe this is what Farmer Counselor Scott was trying to explain. The formal resolution states that the additional fees will create a revenue-neutral fire department for the town of Sunset Beach, and will eliminate the need for the town to eliminate funds from the reserves. These statements are misleading. And let me explain why. First of all, in order to be revenue-neutral, the town would need to reduce the tax rate to offset the, offset the additional revenues generated by the increased fire fees. Secondly, to insinuate that this will also reduce the need to eliminate funds from the reserves is also incorrect. Purchasing major fire department equipment, such as new trucks or unplanned fire department emergencies, will still need to be supported by the town's reserve funding. I would like to file a motion to revise the paragraph to state the following. Be it further resolved that the additional fire fees will be used in order to fully fund the town of Sunset Beach's fired, fired department's annual operating expense budget, and will also allow the town of Sunset Beach to reduce the tax rate equivalent to the revenues generated by the increased fire fees in order to maintain revenue neutrality. That is my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have a second? There is no second.
You second?
I would like to, yeah, can you repeat your motion? What are, what exactly are you asking to be, what amount are you asking?
There is a fire analysis that I prepared, and I hope the council had a chance to read it. Let me try to simplify it as best as I can. I believe the fire fee revenue increases, and it's in the budget, in my analysis, and I'm trying to remember it.
$550,000, Richard.
Well, whatever that number was, that's equivalent to 3.5 cents in the tax rate. So we're giving the taxpayers of this town collectively a 3.5% tax rate increase. Last year, I did not support the budget because the taxpayers were given a 25% fee, fire fee increase that was never offset. The past two years, the residents' fire fee increase is 70%, and not one penny has been offset from the, from the tax rate. Now, the fire fee has now paying for the full operating cost, give or take $10,000 or $15,000. We are not using tax funds to supplement the operating expense for the fire department. So where's that money going? Where are those additional revenues going?
Rich, you have a motion on the floor.
I will read the motion again.
No, 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 I need more clarification. I will tell you where I'm coming from. I agree, we have built into the budget a one cent decrease in our tax rate, correct?
Decrease, yes.
One cent decrease.
That decrease was before the fire-
I understand that. I agree that we should give another two cent reduction in our budget. But that's not in your motion. You're not given an amount in your motion.
Well, let me try to read it again.
A real quick point of order?
Yes.
You can't set the tax rate with this resolution. You cannot set the tax rate with this resolution.
Oh, I understand that, that's why I, I'm recommending to change the language in the resolution.
Right.
I'm not recommending a tax rate. I'm reading, I'm recommending a change in the resolution. That's all. And the change is, and be it further resolved that the additional fire fees will be used in order to fully fund the town of Sunset Beach Fire Department's annual operating budget. That's what it does. And it will also allow the town of Sunset Beach to reduce the tax rate equivalent to the revenues generated by the increased fire fees in order to be revenue-neutral. It does allow that. That's the motion.
But I want to make it clear, because what Ms. Harris is asking is to actually change the taxes on this.
No, no, she, that's not the motion.
But I'm just making it clear that there's no tax change here. I'm clarifying for everyone present.
I, I'd just like to say one thing. We're putting the cart before the horse. This meeting hasn't even occurred yet for the county commissioners. We don't know if it's gonna be 45% or 10%. Last year, they offered, they asked for more, and it got knocked down to 25%. So, you know, if we have to make an amendment to the budget in June, July, Rich, that's when we should do it, when we know what the actual money's gonna be. The commissioners haven't met, Rich, right? Do you agree with that?
I have no idea.
They haven't, the meeting's in two weeks.
This was recommended, so what are you suggesting, that we're gonna defer any, any approval of the budget for just two more weeks?
Not the budget, just to push this off until we know exactly how much money we're gonna get from the fire fees. It's up in the air right now, Rich.
No, it isn't, Mark.
May I ask a question?
Yes, John, go ahead.
In the budget processes, and I'm sorry, I have to ask this question, if we go through and formally impasse the budget for now that sets this current year's tax rate, what flexibility do we have once the fire fees get resolved, we see the cash flow is gonna be coming in? Can we amend our budget? And then, in the course of doing that, how do we get money back to the people?
No, we can't midstream change the tax rate next fiscal year. If that's what you're asking.
Okay, that's-
We'll set the tax rate when we set the budget.
Okay.
However, I think for the point of this item, if he's, his concern with the language is that he feels that the resolution should say that's equivalent to 3.5 cent tax rate, instead of saying it'd make the town revenue-neutral. I mean, that's up to y'all clearly, the resolution's still not gonna matter anything when it comes to y'all deciding the budget as far as an actual legally binding document.
So why do it?
Yeah. Because it'll come back in the course of discussion and say, the council made a resolution to do X, and now we're doing the budget, and we should change the budget to fit the resolution that we have.
There's nothing factually incorrect in the resolution the way it's written.
My view, my view is we leave it where it stands now. We work through the year, and we make sure that we go forward and get a good tax reduction next year, once all the money's come, come out clearly, rather than setting ourselves up for doing it now and not knowing exactly where we're gonna be going or what's gonna happen.
And staff is gonna address something similar to that during the budget discussion?
The next discussion. So I think we should leave the resolution alone and move forward.
Charlie wants to have a discussion.
I, I agree with John, but for different reasons. When we go to vote on the budget, I'll present what I think about the tax increase or decrease.
Okay. Do we have a second on this motion?
What is the motion?
It's your motion? It's your motion, Rich, you wanna reread it again?
No, I've read it twice. I told everybody-
Is there a second on that? There's no second. So it dies.
Council, did you read the fire, the financial analysis?
Yes.
All public records from town, from the town's budget?
I read it, Rich.
Did you understand it?
Word for word, Rich. And I'm not doing anything, though I know if the county commissioners vote on it, how much they're gonna give us. You're putting the cart before the horse, and I don't understand why you don't see that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to respond to the budget.
The motion is dead, Rich.
No, I'm not talking about the motion.
Okay.
The fire study group that this town put together recommended the 45% fire increase. Is that correct?
That's correct, Rich.
There are nine towns that will not raise the fire fee. Is that correct?
Yes.
Based on the data?
How many are raising?
I don't know.
Why do you always do this?
And the ones who are, some of them, it'll be revenue-neutral. Why are we different?
We're not different.
I give up.
Thank you.
No, I was just gonna ask you wanna re-?
Next item?
Wait after the next item.
Okay, next item. I'd like to make a motion to push this off for three months, discussion again. Motion seventeen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Whoa, you're going on too fast.
I missed, what are we?
On the resolution.
On the resolution. On the resolution, Rich. Motion seventeen, to not introduce this back into the budget or discussion of the agenda for three months. So we don't keep repeating these things over and over and over.
So what you're saying tonight is that we're not gonna, this is not gonna be revenue-neutral, revenue-neutral, and we're going to be increasing the taxes, fire fees, which is equivalent to 3.5...
Microphone, sir.
Is that correct?
Rich.
Is that correct?
No, Rich. I'm waiting to see what comes back from the county commissioners before I put the cart before the horse. I don't know why you don't understand that. We already gave a one second dub.
Because the commissioners are gonna approve it.
I explained, the, the resolution has nothing to do with taxes.
So could we have a special meeting next week?
No.
No.
And he's making a res, he's, you've got a second, sir.
Go ahead.
You've got a second on your motion to hold for three months.
Once the commissioners vote on this, can we have a special meeting to go through the budget?
Yes, but I'd like to put that motion, I got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Nay.
Rich?
What is the motion, to delay this for three months?
Delay this for three months, yes.
No.
At this time, I'd like to take a short recess for five minutes, thank you.